Six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, start with the prayers and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you just to thank you for tonight, as we all prepare for Thanksgiving. We have so much to be thankful for, and I pray for the people that don't have family and they're lonely. I just pray that somebody will come in their life and just be a friend for this, come Thursday, invite them in. We thank you for this evening and everybody around this table to make the right decisions for our citizens and all this. I pray through Christ to them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mind everybody to turn off their cell phones. Roll call?
Mark?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Clifford?
Here.
Eggly?
Here.
And Beth, that's Beverly or Abby.
We have before you the minutes, November the 6th, for your approval.
I abstained from voting on the minutes because I was absent that meeting, but I did vote on the bills. You might have abstained on the bills.
I abstained.
Okay, any other corrections?
I just have a question about the solicitor's report, so, and how that laps with today's. So, 2023-26, we approved in a special meeting that ordinance, but then we have the 23-26, which includes pool, a splash pad for tonight, so I guess I just want clarification on how that's. How we get it out.
Special meeting. I couldn't have two at the same number, so I had to change it to 28. So you're a special meeting now.
We changed it to 28, so that's just a splash pad in my house.
Okay, so then in today's, I guess today's schedule, it still says splash pad under 26, so that's, I guess, that's what had me confused, so.
Any other corrections? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. I'll make that motion in a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Eggly?
Abstain.
Clifford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And then, had a special meeting on 11/13 to 23 at 5:00. Had a chance to look that over. Corrections? I guess in your packet.
Thank motion except as written.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Clifford?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
We have before you the bills. Any questions on those?
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Clifford?
Yes.
Eggly? Yes.
Oh, wait, sorry, abstaining, there's, I missed it, sorry.
So, I'll pay the bills and vote, okay. Next on the agenda, boards and commissions. There's a notice, the village council will hold a public hearing December the 18th at 6:00 in the council chamber to hear requests by the planning commission to rezone 301 Musargon from A1 agriculture, public use, to B1 central business, B2 local business, B3 general business. So that's just, it'll be the hearing on the 18th. Planning commission met November the 16th. Minutes are in your packet. Any questions on that? Kelsey Clifford, you're up on the Hicksville Beautification Committee.
Hello, I'm Kelsey, and I am representing the Hicksville Beautification Committee. We just wanted to do a recap of what we've been doing in the community over the last year. We usually try to come here annually and tell you guys what we've been doing. So we do about 25 beds, flower beds in the village, and then all the planters and hanging baskets in town. Dawn Ish, she is a paid employee by the village. Thank you very much for giving her to us because she does have a lot of hours that she puts in during the summer. She does all of the downtown watering for us during the summer and then other things throughout, for us throughout the year. And then the 25 beds, it's the committee members and then also other volunteers that take care of those. This year, we did change the plant sale, so it's been at the township building across from the school. We changed that to the multipurpose building at the fairgrounds. We were a little weary on how that was gonna go with the traffic, but it actually went really well. We plan to continue to keep that at the fairgrounds, just because it did go over so well and the space just was really nice for us. With the plant sale, the money that we raised through that, we obviously purchased the flowers and the seasonal decor that we need, but we were also able to give to donations this year. We were able to give $3,000 to the chamber for the mural, and then also $3,000 to the Hicksville Trail Association. They were able to buy 27 trees with that donation. The other thing that we are, that we did this year is we wrapped all the trees uptown with lights. Those are already on, and then we're also wrapping the big tree on the corner of Main and High. And thank you to the village for getting that electrical done for us so that we could light that tree up. We're hoping, since it's right there where you're going down to the Christmas cruise through, it'll be a really good addition to the village. The other thing that the beautification committee does is the farmer's market is under that. I run the Hicksville Farmer's Market, I have for four or five years. It seems to grow a little bit each year. We had 30 vendors this last summer, and that's June through September. We would typically have between 12 and 15 vendors set up every Saturday morning with us. We do specialty markets, so we've done like a ladies boutique market. That brings in a lot more shoppers, just other people from outside of the Hicksville community into our village. And then also, my favorite market is the youth vendors market that we've done for the last two years. And that brings in around 20 kids or more that set up like handmade goods or they might bake things to sell, and that, people in our community are so awesome. They always come out and support those kiddos. Probably our biggest turnout is always the kids market. We do take WIC farmer's market coupons at our farmer's market, something that I, two summers ago, I got signed up with. And then also, farmers individually can sign up for senior, to take senior farmer's market coupons. So there's two vendors that currently do that. And then this year, I'm working with the Defiance Health Department to possibly implement taking SNAP coupons digitally. So it's a national program that I could possibly sign our market up with to be able to accept those. I love being on the committee. It's fun to find little ways that we can beautify our town, and it's obviously not just us. It's all, it's the businesses and the community members that do that as well, but yes, thank you very much for listening.
Any questions, comments?
A big thank you. I know what you've done downtown and around town is just beautiful, and the farmer's market's nice. I hope people realize how much time they have involved in it, the mornings and the evenings, especially watering and everything. I just get them out late and early, and a lot of volunteers that do that, so, very nice.
Thank you, yeah, it's always great to hear compliments, and we do hear from other people from out of town too, not just people in the community that they just love our little town, like it's just so inviting, so.
Are your membership, does it growing at all, or if somebody's interested in maybe helping, I mean?
If someone is interested in helping, yes, they can definitely contact one of the members. We do accept people on the committee, we're always doing that. And then like, we can always have help with watering or planting or even getting, we've had like a 4H group be involved with planting a bed and taking care of that, or like a group from the school, like a high school group.
I like the fall decorations you have, I noticed them out front and throughout the town, and that just, just looks really nice, so.
Thank you.
Big thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Council committee reports, water sewer committee met November the 6th at 5:00. No minutes were submitted. Right?
Yeah, we did meet, that was fine, actually was kinda late too. Basically, we just discussed a couple, plan for a resident, for wants to tie into the sewer system, and then just briefly discussed a couple of the upcoming projects.
Good. Any questions for that committee? Administrators report.
First and foremost, the curbside lead pickup, the last date for that will be November 30th. Currently, we picked up, we have picked up 63 loads of leaves. Reminder that the recycle lot is closed for the months of January and February. Electrical, water tower is to be wrapped up next week. And then, after that, they will go ahead and disinfect the tower and get it filled with water. And then hopefully, in the next, in the next three weeks or so, that will go online. The fencing is also scheduled to be put up around the water tower. About the time they'll be disinfecting. Met with Choice One over the phone. They got, they got their engineering estimate numbers for our project there for Defiance Avenue. The scope of the project is pretty well done. They are working, still working on the design plans for everything. The actual price that came in is $2,652,870 for the project. We've already started working on a Ohio Department of Development Infrastructure Grant. We cannot submit that until November 28th, so that'll go November 28th. The grant is a match grant. It is a reimbursement grant as well. I'm, I'm pretty confident we will be able to get a decent amount of money to put towards this, this project here on top of what we've already been stockpiling to pay for this. We will go out to bid beginning of the year. For the, we got a project coming up. We got the, we'll go out to bid for... Don't come back to me. We got a project coming up early next year. We got the Rockin Cornelia Street project that has already been out to bid and been awarded, but we do have one that we'll be putting out to bid early next year. This one here, we won't go to bid till later in the year. We won't go very early, so we wanna make sure we have plenty of funds to cover this before we go out, so. Other than that, that's all we got.
What is the, you've got the nature works grant here, what is that money going towards?
This will go towards the fencing at the tennis court. There was, there was a list of things that we applied for quite a bit of money, and this is the $21,280 is what we received. This money was, we had a couple different, I had a couple different projects. Replacement of the, the old fencing around the tennis court, relocation of volleyball courts, and the rehabilitation of the basketball court. So this $21,280 will cover just about all of the tennis court. That there, that old fencing will come down, and we're gonna end up doing the, the black vinyl chain link, but we're just gonna be doing like backstops on it with the 45s on the end, instead of completely encasing that tennis court. It'd be a lot easier for the guys, you know, employees to get in there and mow it and take care of it as well.
Is it in Coopus Gate Park or no, that's a separate?
Yeah, the skate park is completely separate. I'd like to see how it looks when we're all done, whether or not we need to actually retain that fencing. I've reached out to Connet Beck to see if that was part of our insurance, or that skate park has to be sealed off, and it has nothing to do with any of our insurance, so. Cross that bridge when we get there.
I had a, somebody reach out to me in regards to the Cornelia Street and Main intersection, and the like, right as you cross Main on the, what'd be the west side, it seems like that pavement's like swelling more. Is that something that you guys have noticed, or have you looked at that at all?
It's on Main Street or more?
It's more towards, it's more towards west Cornelia.
Yeah.
But that area seems like it's...
That hump there.
Yeah, it seems like that hump has grown.
I mean, we noticed, we noticed that hump, but probably did mill some of that out with that approach going towards town there, and they, you know, milled and paved that, but, I mean, we've not really noticed it growing. I mean, we're aware of a, of a hump being there.
Do you guys have dollars at, at all for like this next year to kind of resurface that totally, this spring, or this next year?
Not, not that intersection in particular. The main one was to try to get Dixon Avenue from Antworth Drive just past Fountain Street there. It's in pretty bad shape.
Okay. I guess I would suggest maybe looking at that, just 'cause over time, with a hump like that, that's probably gonna wear on that Main Street section of that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll keep, we'll keep an eye on it, but the hopes is still that ODOT comes through in 25. And they'll, when they come to pave that, they'll come all the way past that crosswalk and redo that crosswalk and approaches there. So, if it does, I mean, if it does get worse, we'll, we'll handle it. We can, we have funds to take care of that.
And that's a state route, they'll be doing downtown also, 25, okay.
That's, yeah, that's, the last update that I received, yes.
Okay.
But remind you, the last time they said they were gonna do that, the rest of the projects around town, it was a four or five-year wait. I mean, it took forever to get it done, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
Nice to finish the rest of the community.
Did they come in and do the state routes all at once, is that how that works?
They came, what, two years ago?
Last time they stopped, they stopped at all, like, halfway.
Two years ago.
And did the state routes, and then they stopped at Musargon, they stopped at the Catholic church. And then in 25, is when they were supposed to come, were supposed to come back and do the, the other main arteries through town, yeah.
That's all you can go by, is what they say, so. Okay? Anything else, Cory?
Yeah.
Any other questions for the?
You said the Defiance Slip Station, that's, that's, first memory, that's something you're gonna go after before the end of this coming year?
Yeah, this...
For the grant application.
Yes, we're going to, we'll submit the application November 28th. And those, that money won't be released until August of '24. So, come late next year, we can probably put this project out to bid and get going on it.
Do we have to have a completion date for them to release those funds? How does that work?
I don't know exactly yet, but none of that's, none of that's really out.
What's the, what's the date that that has to be addressed, in terms of the long-term control plan?
Uh, January of 2026, we have to start construction.
For November 6th.
So this will put us, with this grant being available, this will give us about a year's head start on it.
And you're working with Choice One on, for the grant application and everything, right?
Yeah, it's, it's ready to go. We just can't submit it yet. We don't, we really haven't put down a hard dollar amount.
Is there a max, does that grant have a max award?
10 million.
Should cut it. Hopefully.
But I don't, you don't wanna go too big, 'cause you don't wanna ask them like 10 million dollars and say, you know, we got $10,000. I wanna try to...
Yeah, well, it's matching, so obviously, there was possible funds up, so.
Yes, correct.
Now, do you have to pat, show EPA because of the long-term control plan? And the final stage is long-term control plan with the rapid treatment system. Is this something you're showing, working with EPA on saying, we're moving forward with this part of the, the plan, but our goal is to not have to do phase three? I mean, that's a very chunk of it, so.
They're well aware of that, yeah.
Working with our overflows and reading the, I know you talked to your office about, you know, doing some metering and everything and finding some flow rates, so.
EPA is aware of what we're doing.
Any other questions for the administrator? Thanks, Cory.
Solicitors report. First thing I have is the second reading ordinance 2023-17 by caption only and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees. And then, first reading of ordinance 2023-18 by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village. Second reading of resolution 2023-26 by caption only, a resolution to the village of Hicksville, Ohio, enter into a contract with Vernon Nagel for construction of a pool and pool house in Hicksville, Ohio, and declare an emergency. And then, last is second reading, a resolution 2023-27, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to hire Rachel Hammer Smith as village solicitor for the village of Hicksville.
So we can't do the emergencies on those, so, any questions on any of those readings?
Has we gotten any more information in terms of pool operations, the closer budget, I guess? Is there any more information out there on that?
My, no, we have a finance meeting Monday evening for the 27th, to go look at some more numbers. I personally, I know the schedules are kinda hectic right now, but I had, just, I had to sit down with Cheryl, and sit down with Cory, and talked about, you know, fines and, and fines, funding, operations, all that stuff. To me personally, feel confident, I mean, but I know we wanted to sit down Thursday night and discuss, I know with Charlie and everybody, so.
Do we need to have an emergency meeting to meet that December 1st?
Well, my question, because of the deadline and how we all, we're running a second reading already. If the third, the third reading, we could pass it, even a normal...
Well, the...
Since the contract's only due to December 1st, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was the end of the year, I thought.
You can ask for an extension, but...
Oh.
Yeah, we...
I thought it was 60 days from the beginning of November.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
30 days. We, we can, we're in agreeance with Vernon Nagel. For 60 days, they will grant us that additional 30 days with those numbers, hold those numbers.
So you're saying, the first meeting in December, could vote, third reading, and it still be all right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Don't have to rebid it?
No.
I guess we'll wait till then, have to.
Is that, I guess, that's a question, Ken could probably weigh in on that. If it says December 1st, do they have to, how does that work if we haven't awarded anything? To grant an extension on their, what their bid that was submitted, from, from a legality purpose?
It's in the, it's in the...
It's in the documents?
Yeah.
And whatever it says in the documents, then, as far as if there's some type of notice or something that needs to go to them?
Yeah, they've been notified. Okay. I know we're waiting on some RPS to come back, so, you know, you don't want to make a decision.
First Monday to third reading, move forward, at least get a vote in the third reading. They are, so, okay. Any questions for Troy?
Any updates on industrial drive?
Haven't heard of them.
How about the toll? Is our new solicitor briefed on the situation?
Uh, we've talked about some of that, but we do need, her and I are gonna need to sit down before the end of the year and go over some things. I got some criminal case files I gotta get to where they'll still be going on and stuff like that. That'll definitely be on the list.
All right, yeah.
Okay, anybody else got any questions for our solicitor? Department has, police chief.
So, I don't really have anything except for request for executive section to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, do that later.
So, unless you have any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
How'd the interviews go?
Good.
Are you still interviewing, or?
No. That's what personnel is about.
Any other questions for the chief? Fire and EMS, Bruce?
I don't have much either. Our main line pumper, 504, is down in Finley again. Had a leak in the tank, and it was leaking about, I don't know, 100 gallon a day out of 1,000, 1,200. So it's down there, and then I just figured we'd go ahead and just do the rest that what I held off doing the first time. I call them Finley fires still, but they will take this pay, that they, the bill that we're gonna get from them, and send it to the first year, so no money's gonna come out of my account until after first year. So we get money in my account.
They're gonna work on the valve also, right?
Yep, bell, a few other things that, this small stuff. And that's, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, just to clarify on that, when did, that money for the, it's not allocated until?
March.
Until March, right? So, will they hold off till then, or does that need to be a general fund transfer and then back in?
Payback.
I don't know how it's gonna take to do all the repairs.
That's your backup pumper, right?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And then that has leak also, so, and that's 32 years old.
It's done well.
Yeah, it's doing well, I mean, it pumps.
Okay.
How's Feather Bingo? How's Feather Bingo turned out?
How many guys we have?
Feather Bingo?
Oh, Feather Bingo? Went well. We were in a $7,000, $8,000 range, and I thank all the people that, that came and bought all the stuff. So, that helps the association, which in turns, they buy stuff for the fire department.
So it was over 400 people there?
Yeah.
It started at four, and they were still bingoing up for nine o'clock, so, yeah. Bingo was from six to nine.
And I just have, I guess, a question on how the fire association operates. So is, are, is the chief, I guess, are you also then head of the fire association?
No, no, that's, that is, just like any association, has the president, vice president, secretary treasurer, and then the body.
And who holds those positions now?
Who looks what?
Who holds those positions currently?
John Elwood owns the, he's the head of the association, he's the president.
Okay.
They don't money that, we're, we're a 503C, and we gotta give away a ton of money every year, so we don't get to keep all that money. We give it to like, the Huber, Christ Covered, and all that sort of stuff, so. We divvy it out, plus we have two scholarships that we give away, so.
You, you buy some equipment with that money, too, don't you?
Oh yeah, we bought, I can't exactly tell you what we bought the last couple years, or the last 20 years.
Wanna buy a new pumper truck?
I'd like, I'd like it. I might as well. We can think about, um, next year, after the first year, I got a gentleman that called me and wanted to know if we wanted to do like... we wanted to do like we do with this rescue squad, make a payment once a year, you know, buy it on a payment plan because there's no way, he said that no way would ever, twenty years to catch up with what's going on now, so. He's gonna give me paperwork, we're gonna talk, how much it's gonna be month or a year or a month. When you're talking three hundred thousand dollars or more. So, that's another thing we get to look forward to. Of course, if you want me to just go on, put money into it, I can do that too. Didn't need like that.
I know your association does a lot, I mean, they raise a lot of money and help with some different things, they do a lot of hard work, but then also I was gonna mention too, you have another kind of part-time EMT to help with some of the shifts and everything, but Derek.
Right, and that's, that's something else the police fire committee I'd like to get with also and discuss employment also, so, that first year will be fine.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Okay, next person.
Thank you.
Park Director.
I don't have nothing, but we're done down there for the year.
Good year.
Yeah.
Any questions for Val or Gary?
Thank you.
Okay, Fiscal Officer, Cheryl?
I have the usual fund status and cash summary and I only have one collection to report from the police department.
Any questions for them? Okay, I can give my report. Christmas cruise through starts tonight through December twenty-fourth, so encourage everybody to go down take a look at it and I wish everybody have a very blessed Thanksgiving.
Add something to the Christmas cruise through?
Absolutely.
They still need volunteers to help with working the gates and different things and go online and volunteer your time and maybe help with different crosswalks and, I don't know, with the skating rink and different things, but if you have time and could volunteer, they could really use it, especially the weekends, they're out there every night, you know, so they're doing stuff, so. That'd be awesome, just go online and put your name in.
I'd just like to mention the free community Thanksgiving out at Gathering Place. This is, I think, our fifth year, fourth, fourth or fifth year that I'm doing it. Always a pretty decent turnout, so invite everybody, yeah, absolutely.
Can I bring Mike twenty out?
Absolutely. Got to go boxes.
I bet my wife won't go for that. Okay, anything else needs to be brought, or this council? Did I hear Executive Session?
Yeah.
I make a motion for Executive.
Second.
Vol call.
A little more detail.
Oh, personnel, I hear.
What type, I mean, it needs to be more, like hiring, hires now?
Carl?
Yes.
Eggway?
Yes.
Flapper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.